He was a big basketball player, right?
He was a good one.
Yeah, I remember. I remember. And he coached for a while here, too, right? Yeah.
It is 6:01 PM. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Everybody can please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, one nation, under our, indivisible, with every teeth and justice for all. I am going to make the motion to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing confidential personnel matters with Mr. Dale Brialt.
All right, we'll second that.
Discussion? Ready discussion? All those in there? Motion passes. Donna, you had your end of the six zero. Dar is not coming tonight. He got mandated at work. Okay. We're going to enter executive session at 6:02.
Take care of everybody. Have a good night. If you have any more questions, I'll be in the gym.
Thanks, Neil.
Get your uniform on and go to the well.
I think those days were very...
Yes, I did. Misty seconded. No discussion. Six zero exited at 7:03. Okay, we're back. Reports and discussion. Number one, the superintendent's report, and I'm going to hand it over to our new, but not new, interim superintendent, Mr. Walbridge.
Okay, thank you, Maggie. Good evening. Thank you for being here this evening. I know we've got, I don't know what it's like out there now, but it was a blowing snow there earlier. I'm going to try to frame part of our discussion for this meeting and with the understanding that our board members said they have any questions, please feel free to ask them at any time. Our school business manager, Stephen Peck, will focus his remarks on last year's budget just briefly. He's going to touch upon this year's current budget and where we hope to move forward for the 2025-2026 budget development. With the exception of Maggie, Donna, and Stephen, we're all new to the SRF budget development process. Although Mr. Peck's focus will not necessarily focus on budget figures primarily, he will provide our board members with a budget analysis of what he knows about Governor Hokel's executive budget that was, we anticipated would be released this afternoon. At this point in time, we don't have it. Is that correct? So it's kind of atypical from what I've experienced over the years. But what we will do, once we get it, we will do an analysis. We'll meet with Amanda and Kate as a team and we'll go over it, and then we will get information out to you directly. Okay? Additionally, he's going to provide us with an overview of status of our food service manager, civil service called a cook manager, but he will do that. And lastly, he'll open up a preliminary discussion about our possible school bus purchase and as a piece of the 2025-26 budget development process. And obviously, we'll attempt to entertain any other information that board members may seek and will answer any other questions as part of our discussion this evening. On the instructional programming side of things, I'm appreciative that we have our pre-K through 12 principal, Manazulu here, and a director of food personnel services, coordinator of food services services. I think that's a technical name here in San Francisco Falls. Kate Kirkshank here with us to provide kind of a brief analysis of their leadership roles in regard to the budget process as it deals with instruction. They're going to highlight some of the positive professional development opportunities that they're involving our staff with. I was part of a facilitated professional development offering on Friday with Mrs. Zulu and also Mrs. Kirkshank provided some facilitation for our staff, and it was well done. And so we had that going for it. With all the positive activity occurring here at SRF Central, I want to point out at the onset of the budget development process for 2025-26, that the reduction in our instructional staff in the current budget, 2024-2025, has really had kind of an adverse impact on our ability to provide academic intervention services and what they call MTSS, multi-tiered support systems services to our students. We lost four teaching assistants. We lost two academic intervention services teachers in a small district like this. That basically decimates your ability to provide some of the interventions. That doesn't mean they're not being provided, but they're having to be provided in the classroom by the teacher. And unlike, not unlike any other North Country School District, we do have many of our students that are not at grade level, and they need this additional support. And so we're hopeful that we could at least have discussion moving forward about bringing those positions back. Basically, you know, I spoke at a Board of Education meeting as a board member the last board meeting and talked about student achievement gaps. And with many of our kids, there are gaps, and there are variances in the services, types of services that they need, regardless of whether we're a small school district or not. And at this point in time, they're it. And they're working hard. They're new, as you well know, and do the very best job that they possibly can do. So that's something, you know, we'd like to talk about. And I do want to make mention that Friday morning, February 7th, there is a legislative breakfast in Lake Placid High Teach Resort. And I've asked Donna to see if the school van will be available. And if it's not, I'll drive my van. And any board member that wishes to attend, they certainly may do so. Something that I've never missed as a superintendent. I've gone a few times as a Mollon Central Board of Education member. Our Assemblyman, Billy Jones, will be there. Dan Steck, State Senator, will be there. And it's kind of, you know, give us kind of a, you know, an overview of where they think they are as they enter the legislative session. Such as finding out what the information is from the governor's executive budget. And then from there, we can develop, I would hope, an advocacy effort subsequent to that February 7th meeting. You know, without any further comment from me, I'll turn it back to Maggie.
Thanks, Mr. Walbridge. And it's Stephen.
Yep, he's...
Yep, so if you don't have anything further, I can start running through some of my analysis so far.
I'll turn it over to you, Stephen.
So thank you, everybody, for coming. I know we're on a minor time capsule. Try to keep cognizant of that. So if you need me to stop or if you have any questions, please let me know, and I will address it further. So very brief snapshot of 2024, a couple of highlights that I do want to point out. Roughly about $9.5 million in overall expenditure versus $9.7 million in overall revenue. That's a positive variance for the district of $200,000. We entered the year with a 16% fund balance of approximately $1.6 million throughout the course of accounting and... I'm sorry? Sure, $1.6 million in unappropriated fund balance. So throughout the efforts that the district made throughout the year, we ended up reserving $875,000 in funds tucked away in different reserves that we had. Through some budgetary appropriations, we did end up at $1.6 million again for an unappropriated fund balance at the end of 2024. That was due to majority of the fact that we had appropriated fund balance that we did not reinject to the 2025 budget of the sum of about $450,000. So that is a large reason why we went from the originally anticipated number of 12% that we had originally thought we would end up at versus the 16% that we're at now. So throughout 2025, however, we will make efforts to, again, review this as we do every year. We do anticipate reviewing our surplus to further attack that number, get it down to a more appropriate level that OSC would find suitable for state legislation. For 2025, it's no secret that we're dealing with a bit of a crisis in the cafeteria right now without a food service manager. So my team's done a wonderful job stepping in, maintaining the current food service that we have now. Darla's been fantastic in making sure that everybody is fed, properly cleaned, everything is taken care of. So we don't really see a major lapse in service. We do have access to all these state websites again as of this week, so we can maintain... Talking's not my specialty, so we can maintain our state reporting, make sure revenue keeps coming in for the cafeteria service.
Where are we at with finding a new cafeteria manager?
So I know the superintendent's office has reached out to civil service to find information on that title, see if we can generate lists and solicit interest from outside parties. I've taken steps as well in trying to reach out to former employees that could possibly come in on an interim basis to help us out while we figure out a long-term solution. And to tie myself into the 2026 budget later, we've also been looking at some long-term solutions as well through avenues of third-party service that would come in and manage that service for us. Those are preliminary at this point, but it is an option that we can take longer.
So one of the things I'll just say, when I was superintendent of Mollon, before I retired the second time officially in Mollon in 2013, we were putting forth $150,000 out of our general budget to support our school lunch program. And when I left, Mr. Schaefer went out as Mr. Exit to a third-party vendor, and it turned things around, and we had a positive fund balance to the point, after about two, three years, we had enough money and we had to spend it putting new equipment in all of our cafeterias, all five buildings. So it was a real, a real positive. And in talking with Mr. Peck, he indicated we basically put in about, would you say about $20,000 maybe?
$20,000 was the number last year and the year previously, I believe was closer to 40, but I do want to verify that before I state it.
Out of your general budget. So, you know, and that was my first concern was, number one, our kids need to be fed. And so, so far, I'm very pleased. I'm down around the cafeteria in the morning. I make it routine to be so, and lunch break if I don't have a meeting. And Donna's been very positive, very upbeat, and we've got another person that's in there, and things have gone very well. What's that?
Did you hire someone else?
No, we have a long-term sub that usually comes in, that's in there. Things are going smoothly. I check in with her in the morning. Said Stephen's staff is supporting him. The other concern I had was who's going to do our neutral kits reporting, state reporting? And even through Nerrick and my authorizations, going to be doing it. So we're in a good spot temporarily. I think we just have to make decisions as a board where you want to know. But so far, it's, things are going well.
Thanks.
Yeah.
You. So on the instructional side in 2025, it's no secret that a lot of our staff is very young. So we've taken a lot of measures this year to actually developing a lot of our staff. I'm sure you guys are aware that we've been sending a lot of our staff to BOCs for single-day trainings, I believe. Amanda, correct me if I'm wrong, is it OPS? And the...
Orton Gillingham?
Yeah, so one of the things is training on the reading strategies. And SAD has come out with having us having to attest to integrating certain strategies that are evidence-based when group students reading. So we had worked with the BOCs starting in July and throughout the school year to have training. And there were seven individual trainings during the school year so far, as well as three full days during the summer that staff attended to integrate, to learn the model and start to integrate it into classrooms, and that is regularly being used across our building in all of our elementary school classrooms, as well as in our high schools as needed with our special education department.
They've also undergone effective teacher training, right, that they call ABL. Ironically enough, in 1984, we were the first district in North Country to be trained through effective teaching strategies through Madeline Hunter. And so they still are around. Obviously, the research, they've changed somewhat, but it's very, very valuable teaching tool. You know, it's somewhat unfortunate. We have such a large turnover in staff. But the beauty of it is that it's an opportunity for us to get some good professional development. The Orton Gillingham training is outstanding for reading. And the big thrust today is the science of reading and also the effective teacher training. There's some real neat stuff. And as being the independent evaluator, going, doing, in and doing on and out future observations, I used a lot of that jargon, then I had a post-observation with them, and they were in tune with most of it. So kudos to some good professional development. Obviously, there's going to be ongoing PD for the growth of this teaching staff. But from what I see so far, you know, they're off to a great start.
So essentially, our 2025 spending has come to a close in terms of supplies and item acquisition. So in terms of actual incoming items, we don't see a lot of, a lot of what we'll see as we would in the September area of the year. So we do see a lot of the spending slowing down, so we will be further anticipating our fund balance projections as well later in the year. So with that being said, 2026 is coming quick. So the work that we've been doing with our supervisors has been primarily focused on what their goals are for next year. We do have a couple of bullet points, but together to help them achieve what those goals are, and hopefully those goals will become prevalent in the budget process. So cafeteria, what we're trying to do is essentially going to come forward. We're enacting what our goals are right now, and we're just projecting them in terms of the fiscal portion coming into next year. So we're actually seeing a lot of that movement now instead of next year. Operations and management, we're going to be looking to identify where our 2026 project is for our $100,000 capital outlay. So we'll have some facilities conversations regarding that. Our equipment fleet is fairly serviceable. We don't anticipate a complete overhaul of items like our truck tractor or snow removal. Those are fairly fresh, so we don't anticipate any of those large items coming through this budget. We have had regular scheduled maintenance this year. We actually had one of the pistons in our tractor go this morning, so we have that scheduled out. But we do anticipate those being a not item moving into next year. So just key items like that are items that we're monitoring. Robbie's also been monitoring the health of boiler systems. Building envelope is another item that we'd like to bring forward into the capital picture as well. So those will be ongoing discussions, but we don't really see much movement anticipated in his service contracts or his fiscal nature. We do maintain a lot of the, a lot of the same vendors that we do year by year. So we don't anticipate a lot of movement with them. Absolutely.
Back to the outlay thing. Did that whole deal in Jim Wall get done? The door?
The dividing wall? Yeah, that was completed mid-year 2024. We have seen delay in the actual completion of that project on paper because of the additional filing that we have to do with the sensor being so late. But we are working on that with the architects and background. We do, and it's functioning. Everything is functioning.
And I'm sure they'll finish that.
Did they get that, you know, how they were worried about the leak into the outside of the building? Is that all that completed as well?
Yep, they attacked the outside of the building with a lot of sealing over the summer. I believe we talked about it a handful of times in the facilities meetings, but they did, they did take care of that during the, during the mid-year. And again, we do anticipate going back around and identifying some of those weak spots throughout the year as well.
And, well, I was going to say this, in my superintendent notes that you'll get on Friday, I'm giving you kind of an update in terms of our capital outlay project for 24-25, or 23-24, that just got completed. If you notice those doors, they're heavier, they're sealed. I'll give you an update on that project. I know Mr. Peck was holding back the money for that project until it got completed. And I'll give you an overview of what we're doing in this year's budget. These $100,000 capital outlay projects enable me to get state aid, a quick turnaround in state aid. Boards of education, NISB, and other advocacy groups like NISCUS or whatever, they've lobbied to get that up to $250,000, $300,000, $350,000, because today, $100,000 can be eaten up pretty quickly with our technical fees, et cetera, et cetera. But that, that information will be there Friday.
Moving over to transportation, some of our goals that we'd like to implement, two main points being mechanic position and service contract with, for this year as an example, Mollon Central to service our buses. That's going to be a topic that we'll dive into throughout the year. I know we've solicited interest internally as to potential on servicing our own vehicles internally. As of right now, that is very preliminary. So it's going to be something that we further look into throughout the, throughout the springtime, to see if we can implement something in 2026. That being said, we do have a New York State mandate with the electric buses, so we continue to research that. We have to keep looking at it until they tell us we don't. As of right now, 2027 is coming very quickly. So we'll be attacking that with potential for grants, planning strategies, and implementation. As you guys know, an electric bus is $450,000 right now without the charger. So that could be a very large strain on anybody, any school district, anywhere in the state. So we'll look to absolve the district of as much burden of that as we can should something like that move forward. To dovetail that, we do plan on propositioning for another buses here. We do plan for it to be diesel, so I will expect that to come out in May. As of right now, those buses are running about $150,000 per. So again, that's going to be an anticipation that you would see coming forward. Lastly, I will kind of skip over instructional and people services portion as we have both our administrators here tonight, and they can give you a quick highlight as to what their, what their goals for next year are. One of the things that we're looking at is maintaining all staffing across the building. Of course, things change based on the governor's run. We're anticipating something flat, but we don't have anything concrete. We are posing interchangeability within service fields in items such as guidance counselors, psychologists, service providers. We do plan to budget for contracts and personnel, but we won't... Trying to find the wording. It's, it's not like we're going to double-dip essentially. So if we cannot find a person, the salary for that person would assist in paying for a contract. That way, we aren't misinterpreting what those funds are for essentially. So I do want to highlight that as you will see transfers throughout the year. We are able to secure proper personnel for certain items that these ladies would use them for. And finally, one of the key things that is going to affect next year's budget is the fact that we have two employee contracts due for negotiation this year, those being our non-instructional unit and our instructional unit. So those will be monitored throughout the year. They will have a large effect on the numbers that we put forward. So that is one of the items that we will report on as, as we are... Are there any preliminary questions with anything? I know it was a lot of information very fast. But everybody knows they're always more than welcome to contact us if they have anything they'd like us to look into, avenues they'd like us to explore. More than happy to do so for you guys. With that being said, I would turn it over to Amanda if they have any information.
Thanks, Stephen. Do you want to come up here? Sorry, your voice projects. I heard you fairly well, but thank you.
Yeah. Thanks for the opportunity to share it with me. I did want to outline that with a lot of our COVID funding here, we purchased some curriculum based on the strengths we saw with our students. And we were intentional with front-loading professional learning for our new teachers so that they learned both what the curriculums were as well as the materials. And that has been going well and continuing. We work very closely with the service that was purchased a year ago with BOCs to both map the curriculum as well as match the instructional strategies learned at the effective teacher training and the Orton Gillingham training to needs of our students, strengths of the teachers, and the curriculum itself. So instruction in the classroom at this point is going as well as we could expect, if not better. Our teachers are working hard. They're learning our students. They're meeting the needs of the kids. We're in the middle of completing our mid-year benchmark testing, which is a neutral called criterion reference test, which measures how kids are doing. We gave it at the start of the year. We're looking at it now. Last Friday, I held a training with staff on what to look for as they were getting the class results. And they used, having worked with the product, some previous sample data sets, did some practice, learned a protocol. Our folks are now meeting with our BOCs representatives and myself, looking at what they're doing, adapting instruction based on what they're seeing. And I can tell you, having sat in some meetings today and talked with staff today, things are going quite well. Staff really excited by the growth they're seeing and making, making plans for adjustments to further strengthen as they've gotten to know their students and become more comfortable in the classrooms. But all great stuff. One of the areas we're challenged in, and I know Mr. Walbridge has mentioned it, is the specific knowledge of interventions to help with some of the challenge. And so we are grateful for our BOCs folks who can connect us with some teachers elsewhere with that knowledge right now. But having been in different buildings, it is helpful to have somebody whose work that is. So that's something, if there's any gap we have across the instructional program, particularly in our early levels, that would be an area that we could focus on providing some more support. I'd also like to highlight that we do have, we're using our Panorama portal. We got together last week. We met with Panorama. Teachers started to build groups around the strengths they were seeing with kids, as well as some of the areas for more improvement. We're doing that pre-K all the way up to 12. And within those classrooms, teachers are now making centers, they're called, little areas where kids work on a common activity to grow knowledge in the areas. So that work is all coming together and clicking together quite well. Instructionally, we do have one staff member who teaches everybody 7-12 in a subject area that is a subject area for region's level graduation. And we're working to provide support for that, that person, especially given the, given the type of work it is and the gaps kids are coming in with. So I can't emphasize enough, our teachers are working hard, working to meet the needs of kids, working with curriculum, and all the resources they've been provided and are grateful to. But there's certainly work and a little bit more we could do to help provide that support.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you. Again, thank you for letting us share all the great things that we're doing here, um, at Cedar Ridge Falls. Uh, I just wanted to take the opportunity to share a little bit about what's going on with, uh, PPS and special education specifically. Um, currently we have three full-time special education teachers, one at every level, um, of the, of the building, primary, intermediate, and high school. Um, we also have one full-time staff member who's, uh, working on, um, credentials as a special ed teacher, um, who will probably be able to fill in some of the gaps that we might have. Uh, but because of his role as a content area teacher, um, there won't be a lot of wiggle room for that, but we have them utilizing him in some ways to help, um, support the students in the way that they need to be supported. Um, as you know, regionally, we have a shortage of, of, uh, teachers and, um, related service providers and everything. Um, so, um, we are still posting for guidance counselors, speech, of speech pathologists, uh, occupational therapists, um, and a school psychologist. Um, however, right now, I can't speak highly enough of the people from Presence Learning. We are actually contracting, Stephen spoke a little bit about this in his, um, in his, uh, report. They're wonderful, they're responsive, the kids seem to be, um, engaged in the, in, in most of the, uh, the sessions. Um, however, nothing can take the place of an in-person experience. So we are still actively looking for that. Um, not to say that we wouldn't have to contract maybe part-time for some things. I mean, ideally, we would love to have people in person here for our kids. I could think of one example on, you know, especially our younger learners. Um, they really have a tough time with their, their attention span and things like that, so we're really, really hoping. So put the word out there, if you know any good people, um, who are like in, in those areas, we really, really need that, um, service here at the school. Um, we do have, um, one, we are, uh, employing one full-time, uh, aide to, to run and manage the, um, the virtual learning classroom that, um, uh, the kids go to, they report to for the speech OT. Um, really very lucky to have Lisa Leary here in person, so she is covering our physical therapy in person, which is great. Um, the last thing I wanted to cover was, um, the fact that our, our special ed team has been learning and growing together. Um, we have participated in several, uh, uh, trainings together. One, um, was, uh, IEP training. Uh, unfortunately, it got canceled because of our snow day the other day, so we're hoping that they offer it in the Franklin St. Hamilton area because I think they said that was, this was the only area they haven't offered that yet. So we're hoping to attend that together. Um, we had a, a team of people, uh, report to the TCIS training, which is therapeutic crisis intervention for our students who, um, have a hard time regulating their emotions and their behaviors. So we do have people on staff, um, very well trained in that. And we also have two, uh, staff members who had volunteered to become trainers for TCIS. So they're going to be going away to get some training to be able to come back and train the rest of us on how to use those strategies the best with ours and with our students. Um, finally, um, we're recently going through a, um, participating in a special education review with state ed. We have two, um, uh, regional associates, uh, coming to school for the second time this week to do some classroom visitations and walk through the district and, and talk to people. And, um, the purpose of the review is to make sure that our district is, um, a lot, our practices and procedures are aligned um, appropriately with what the state expects from us servicing and supporting our students. Um, I can say that, um, for our initial meeting, they had, uh, requested some, um, documentation and, um, other items from us. I have given it to them and they've given me very positive feedback on what I did share with them. Um, so we did get some feedback on a couple of policies I know I've shared with Jane about, uh, that have to be updated regarding our students with special needs. Uh, but other than that, um, things seem to be going well with that. So hopefully the outcome of the review will provide us, um, uh, some opportunities to learn and grow and be the best that we can be. So again, I'm going to do what everybody else said, if, you know, if you have ever have any questions, just give it to us. The ring.
You said we don't have a speech therapist on site?
Not on site, no.
So what's, just give me a quick, what that room is and how they, how are they serviced?
Okay, so we, we have, um, we have a room down here at the end of the hall, uh, down where Lisa Leary's room is. Um, it's equipped with, um, the, the, uh, technology, uh, the computers and such that the kids need. Um, our aide is there to monitor, make sure that the children are on the, the virtual learning. Um, their teacher is on the screen, much like our people are here on the screen here and the, and that's how they do their, their, uh, their-
So the aide just stays there to make sure everybody?
Yes, yeah, they're always supervised, um, and the, the, the practitioners that we have are outstanding. I, I honestly, I wish we could have them here in person, we'd be even better, but we're doing the best we can with the virtual and, and, you know, we, we actually even have some, we have some preschool students in the, in the, um, uh, in the district who are actually going to be logging in at home because they, they have a hard time coming in and transitioning into school. You know, it's just a lot to take in, it's very overstimulating for some chil- little, little guys. So they're able to log in at home, which is kind of a nice, um, way to be able to transition them, you know.
And that's your OT as well?
Yeah, well, yes, OT is also, um, virtual, yep. And sometimes that's in the therapeutic, the therapeutic room down there as well. So sometimes depending on, um, the schedule, we do have some aides that you cover also.
Is that normally a BOC's position?
OT, in, in my past experience, yes.
Are they advertising work still and just no one?
Yeah, and actually, um, we, we actually, um, have offered, uh, with this whole regionalization discussion that we've been having, to have, to house, uh, special ed, another special education, um, program here. And BOCs is still, I believe, I, I, last time I checked, it is still on their website, they are still advertising for that. Um, so we just can't find people to, to, to manage.
Actually Donna has just started up, you know, re-advertising for those positions, uh, as of yesterday, she was working on that. And we also got Spanish that's being instructed through long-distance learning.
So we, I, I was speaking more PPS, but yes, there are several other, um, uh, positions that we are in need of in person, um, you know.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I want to thank all three of you, uh, you know, I've only been here about a week and a half, a number of days, but two weeks overall and, uh, um, they've been excellent teammates.
Great.
That's, that's all I could ask for and we're going to do all we can, best interest of our kids. That's all I'm like, so, thank you.
You.
Yeah, thank you.
Love you. Uh, Dee, public comment. Okay.
All right, well, I got it.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, yeah, I do. Just want to thank Mr. Walbridge again for stepping up of our community again. Uh, it's much, uh, uh, good to see you here. And a lot of my concerns when I come to work, getting real questions and stuff, um, just the feeling, yeah, with the administrators talking about what's going on, you get a lot better sense of transparency of what's going on. And that calms a lot of things, you know, when, when you, when you feel like you're not in the stone wall, you know, people have to come up and ask questions constantly, so I do appreciate that. Again, you know, the board's doing a really great job, we're looking forward to seeing what else comes this year. Thank you.
Thanks, Randy. Okay, two board comments.
I'm impressed.
Thanks for coming, everybody.
I feel good.
Thanks for coming, thanks for all of your reports, that was very helpful.
Thank you.
And, um, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And I'll second that.
Discussion? No discussion, all those in favor?
We're not taking out a electric bus before a diesel bus, are we? The diesel bus is going to be the first purchase, did I miss that?
So, uh, we do plan on propositioning for diesel.
First.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
But we are, we are definitely exploring EV because there's a mandate in twenty-seven.
For twenty-seven, I missed that, sorry, thank you.
Okay, I made the motion for executive, no discussion, all those in favor? Lisa, all right. Six, zero.
Have fun you.
Meeting is adjourned at seven forty-two.